I'd like to call to order a meeting of the Board of Selectmen and Licensing Commissioners for the Town of North Andover, Monday, June 20th, and we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." First item on the--
What happened?
Paper doesn't fall over like that.
It doesn't start at dawn every time.
It does.
It just wakes them up.
All right, we're going to start with the approval of minutes.
Motion to approve minutes from the June 6th meeting.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Moving right on to Communication and Announcement, one of the best things that we get to do in town. We this evening will be swearing in, well actually, Town Clerk Joyce Bradshaw will be swearing in, Police Sergeant Jay Saudi.
And for those of you who are at home, today is our Town Clerk's birthday today.
Oh, that's right! Happy Birthday!
That was going to be on the Communications and other announcements.
I couldn't wait. I didn't see it, sorry. I have to say it's an honor and a privilege to be able to do this, especially for such a wonderful person, and we're very lucky to have you, and we're very lucky to have you as a sergeant, and I'll put you on my cellphone if I need it. Okay, if you wouldn't mind raising your right hand and repeat after me, aye.
Aye.
State your name.
Officer Jay Saudi.
Solemnly promise--
Solemnly promise.
--and affirm--
And affirm.
--that I will faithfully--
That I will faithfully--
Honestly--
Honestly.
Sincerely--
Sincerely.
And impartially--
And impartially.
Perform all the duties--
Perform all the duties.
--that are incumbent upon me--
That are incumbent upon me.
--as a sergeant--
As a sergeant.
--in the north end of a police department--
In the north end of a police department.
--so help me God.
And I believe, Jay, you have a guest to open the badge on?
I do. Someone wants to help, but he's going to try, so he's going to be very mad if he doesn't get a chance to do it.
Might need to put him on his chair.
Might have to try.
Either that or you get down on the knees. One or the other.
Right on it, like you did earlier. You can do it.
Oh, my goodness. Okay.
Yep, you're doing good. Good job, that's good. That's fine.
Hold on, let me back up. Hold on. Oh, my goodness. All right, is it all right? It's fine.
Yeah.
Yay! Thank you.
You guys don't have to stay because it's-- I know it's exciting, you guys. Feel free.
Bye, guys, thank you. Bye-bye. We'll see you later. Thank you.
The Saudi tried.
Bye. We should have had them sing.
I know. Really cute. That's great, it's one of the best things we get to do. Also, under Communication and Announcements is Job Posting and Vacancy Logs, which are always--
This is the typical log produced by the HR Director every couple of weeks. We're through one of those periods, again, where we have a certain number of vacancies that have appeared, especially in the library, so we are diligently trying to fill all our positions. We had two new employees start today, Outreach Coordinator at the Youth and Recreation Department, as well as our new Town Engineer, so we're working on that.
Great. I'd like to add something under Communication and Announcements in regards to the Executive Assistant to the Town Manager. Ms. Lori Berzlaaf has recently completed her Certificate in Local Government and Leadership and Management from the Mass Municipal Association and Suffolk University-Mockley Center for Public Management. It's quite an accomplishment, and it just goes to show the professionals we have in town and who are dedicated, gave up 25 Fridays, I do believe, for that. So I say congratulations to Lori as well.
Is this one of these deals with a lot of praise and no praise?
Yeah, pretty much.
She struggled doing some of her homework assignments, but she got them all done.
And I'm sure it was not for lack of knowledge and intellect, it was probably just for time.
Yeah, exactly. We thank you. Moving on to Consent Items. Oh, no, I'm sorry, yeah.
Yep, since this is the board's last meeting before Fourth of July festivities, Festival Committee has a couple of days of events planned, on Sunday, July 3rd, and Monday, July 4th. The fireworks are the evening of July 3rd, so I believe the festivities on the Common start at 10:00 a.m. on the 3rd, or noon on the 3rd, and the road race starts real early on Monday morning, the day of. So there will be activities on the Common as there are every year, so hopefully those who are not going away will come and enjoy Fourth of July on the Town Common.
The 3rd is from 12:00 to 10:00, and the 4th starts at 6:00 because of the race to 5:00 p.m.
Great, good, okay, so any other announcements from the board?
I will be running the race.
Come on.
Breaking news, Brian, write that down.
Dawn will not be running. All right, then we're going to move on to Consent Items and begin with the ratification of collective bargaining agreement between us and--
I was going to say, this is the third contract that has now been settled, this is with ASME Council 93, Local 2978, the Clerical Union, and we are very proud of the fact that the union notified us that they ratified this contract by unanimous consent.
Wonderful.
So we are asking the board tonight to also ratify.
Do I have a motion?
Chair, I move that the board ratify the collective bargaining agreement between the Town of North Andover and AFSCME Council 93, Local 2978, Clerical for the period of July 1st, 2016 through June 30th, 2019. Excellent.
All those in favor? Great. We have a request from the Festival Committee to use the Common for the Fourth of July.
Having jumped the gun.
This is the annual request from the Festival Committee in order to use the Common, again, on both Saturday, Sunday, July 3rd, and Sunday, July 4th, along with a request to close Mass Ave from Osgood Street to Academy Road from 12:00 to 10:00, 12:00 noon to 10:00 p.m. on Sunday, July 3rd, and from 6:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. on July 4th, and to waive all required any associated fees.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the request of the Festival Committee to use the Common for the July 4th celebration from 7:00 a.m. on Sunday, July 3rd, 2016, through 11:00 p.m. on Monday, July 4th, 2016, to close Mass Ave from Osgood Street to Academy Road from 12:00 to 10:00 p.m. on Sunday, July 3rd, and from 6:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. on July 4th, and to waive all required any associated fees.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the request of the Festival Committee to use the Common for the July 4th celebration from 7:00 a.m. on Sunday, July 3rd, 2016, through 11:00 p.m. on Monday, July 4th, 2016, to close Mass Ave from Osgood Street to Academy Road from 12:00 to 10:00 p.m. on July 3rd, and 6:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. on July 4th, and to waive all fees associated with that.
All those in favor? Aye. Next, we have our request from Joseph Contrada for permission to use the Common on Saturday, the 24th, for the annual St. Vincent de Paul Friends of the Poor Walk.
Now, keep in mind, board, that this is the same day that the North Andover Merchants Association is having their Fall Festival, but there has been communications between the two groups, and they don't see an issue.
No, we did it this way last year, too.
Okay. But as Selectmen Detective College Arrow was very quick to point out that this was--
I was googling and trying to find out just to make sure it was the same.
It was the same thing last year, they overlapped, and it ended up working out wonderfully well for all. Yep, it was great. So do I have a motion? Have a second? All those in favor? Aye. Now, we have a request from Father Dealey over at St. Michael's to use the Town Common as well.
This is an annual request from St. Michael Parish for Sunday, September 11th, for their annual mass and parish picnic on the Common.
All those in favor? Aye, great.
Common's getting a lot of good use.
Yeah, it is, I love it. Request from Sarah Durkin from the High School Music Department to also use the Common.
This also is an annual request that we've gotten probably for the last three or four years from the High School Music Department to use the Common, and just in case there are any questions, there are no fees charged for this, it's just an open house, coffee house.
It's Thursday, July 28th, from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., and it's an open coffee house, as raised stated, and the Common, which is great, because it's a nice little opportunity for people to see some of our younger, talented folks in town.
There's some very talented folks.
Do I have a motion to approve the application? Is there any issues with the Common?
All those in favor? Aye. Accepting donations is next, it's always a good thing.
Veteran Services hosted a Memorial Day Luncheon, and various attendees donated $1,235 to the Veteran Services, and this is a request from Jerry Maguire to use the funds donated for, to finish paying off the cost of the luncheon, and to purchase durable equipment for veterans that are covered by their health insurance.
Beautiful.
I move that the board of selectmen accept this donation.
Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Another donation from the Leeds family, I believe.
The Leeds family are the owners of the local McDonald's on 125 Trinken Road, opposite the high school, and they have, they are donating a treadmill valued at $800 for the fitness center at the new fire station.
Fantastic.
Work up those Big Macs.
That's right.
Move it through.
Have a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And a letter will go out to them, thanking them. We are looking now at accepting and signing the Drainage easement, easement, rather, for on Grapevine Road.
This is 1046 Grapevine Road, Public Works has reviewed the drainage, and Town Council has reviewed and approved the documents.
Do I have a motion to accept this Drainage easement?
I move that the board of selectmen accept and sign the Drainage easement from PR Investments LLC for the Town of North Andover.
Second, sir.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next is also to acceptance sign the sewer easement and drainage easement for Stanton Way.
Right, Town Meeting this past May voted to accept Stanton Way as a public, as a public way, and included in your packet is a letter from Town Council regarding the documents that are required to complete the street acceptance.
Do I have a motion?
You're going to give us time to go back and forth, click in this thing.
Sorry.
It's the paper. No, I have it here, it's the paper that I don't have. All right, except, and, we're on what, we're on, I'm sorry, we're on Chico's, right?
No, we're on Stanton Way.
Stanton Way, sorry. Accept and sign the deed sewer easement and drainage easement for Stanton Way.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Now, we're off to Hitching Post Road.
Similar to Hitch, similar to the previous one, a second to bring this up. Town Meeting voted to accept Hitching Post Road as a public way, and Town Council has, is asking the board to sign the deed required to complete the street acceptance.
Move the approval?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Surplus vehicles at the Police Department.
Including your packet is a letter from Police Chief Gallagher asking that a 2006 Dodge Charger be surplused, and I would ask that you add to your motion that this would be regarded as a trade-in.
A trade-in, okay, great.
Be treated as a trade-in.
Okay, so I'll move that the board of selectmen surplus the vehicle, number 315, a 2006 Dodge Charger, per the chief's memorandum, and that it be used as a vehicle to trade in on another--
Yep.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Okay, we are moving on to our annual appointments.
Included in your packet is a list of selectmen reappointments, and then, I believe, one new appointment to the cultural council, as well as Town Manager appointments to the Board of Sessions, the Board of Health, and the Planning Board.
So it's this very comprehensive--
List, and is the list available, you know, I mean, every board and committee is available online.
Everybody who gets appointed will be placed online, correct.
So do you have a preference, Madam Chair, or do we, can we just move the entire list?
You can move the entire list.
Okay. Madam Chair, I move approval of the Selectmen's reappointment list effective 7/1/2016 as presented in our packet.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are now moving on to Town Council appointment.
Right, as the board has previously noted and voted, Town Council, the town is undergoing the process to hire a Town Council, as well as through an RFP process for a couple of different special councils that are normally needed. As this process will take a few months to complete, the board is being asked to consider these 90-day appointments that would run from July 1st of 2016 through September 30th of 2016, for Herbalison Field still as Town Council, Copelman as Page as a special council, and Collins, Lockren, and Pellican as special council.
Do we need to take these all separately?
Not necessarily, I mean, you can take them together by the thing.
They all agree to accept?
Yes.
Move the proof?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Nothing?
I was just reading it, so--
They are listed separately.
There was no end date on, oh, no.
Three of them are September 30th of 2016, they're all 90-day appointments.
Right, all right. So yes, I would, yes.
Okay, great. All right, do you have a motion to move into the Licensing?
Chair motion to move into Licensing?
All those in favor? Aye. You have a Licensing.
Okay, we're in Licensing. Okay, first on Licensing is a request from Smolak Farms LLC for three all-alcoholic general--
Right, this is a, right, this is actually a continuation of the last--
Case, right.
And Mr. Smolak here, I believe, is here to withdraw those applications, but the board must open to reopen the public hearing.
So I have a motion to reopen the public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, I motion to open a public hearing.
Reopen.
Reopen the public hearing for the application submitted by Michael Smolak.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So we are back in the public hearing, so when we spoke about this, there were some questions on the fees, and I think there were some other questions from some of the neighbors in here, and I guess, Mr. Smolak, would you like to address those, or would you like to?
Well, I sent an email to withdraw my application in view of all the information I learned here. I wish I had known some of this stuff earlier, but it is what it is, and appreciate your time and your consideration, and hopefully if it comes to the point where we need to do it again, we'll come back in again with a little more due diligence.
Okay, so you're requesting to withdraw the application?
Yes, aye, aye.
Do we need a motion?
Well, you first need to close the public hearing, and then just to accept the withdrawal.
Okay, so motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We have a second before the move, but it all works, it's all in here.
And just for the record, you can just vote to accept the withdrawal, if you want to.
Move to accept the withdrawal of the three applications.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we have considered those withdrawn, and we are no longer discussing that. Next on the agenda is several one-day requests of the Wim Prom to Table Dinner Series on Wednesday nights in the tent from 6:00 to 9:00. The dates requested, and this is a wine and malt license, and requesting the dates for June 22nd, June 29th, July 13th, July 20th, July 27th, August 3rd, August 10th, August 17th, August 24th, and August 31st, 6:00 to 9:00 Wednesday nights for the Wim Series, and I'm assuming all of the schedules online, and who the chefs are, and where they can get tickets, and I think, okay. So I think when we last discussed, there were some questions about what was considered to be the tent area, et cetera, I think tonight, Mr. Smolak, you were going to kind of address that for us?
Yeah, that's why I brought Deb Engels. Deb has been managing this for me for quite a while, and she can speak to it much better than I can, because she's there.
Deb Engels, butlers and bars. So all the alcohol is dispersed onto the tent, we have a bar set up, the guests are allowed to go out into the tent area where they have the fire pit, but it doesn't go past that, which is, I don't know, it's not, it's like, it's not very far, they do not walk around the grounds with alcohol, they do not go past the bathrooms with alcohol, the alcohol is all contained down underneath the tent area and in the setting where it's kind of the guava, is that what they call it?
Pine Grove?
Yeah, the pine grove down that way.
Is that somehow cordoned off some way, like, we would see--
It's cordoned off in the, I mean, in the tent area, primarily all the drinking is done in the tent, it doesn't, it very rarely goes out of the tent.
I guess my question is, so if people are leaving the tent, which, okay, they're going out to see the fire and everything else, is there some kind of a roped-in area or something that just delineates, you know, the distance that they can travel with that alcohol? I mean, when we do something at the Common, like when we approve the Fourth of July for the W, they cordon that area off, so this is where they can bring alcohol. When Merrimack College has their football games and they have liquor, they have it cordoned off, so they, outside, they go outside the tent, but it's roped off where they can travel.
There is nothing--
Mr. Chairman, I was there last week, and there's a post in the rail fence all the way around.
Exactly, that's what I was going to say, it is fenced all the way down.
So it's a defined enclosed area?
Yes, it's very, I mean, I can tell you, for three years I've been over there, I've never had anyone go past that, if they do, if they have or even thought about doing it, we direct, we direct them back down under the tent, and that's how it's done. There's no free walking around with alcohol, it's not allowed, it's not going to happen.
Okay, well, I mean, that's the answer, that's, that's a good answer. Any other questions from the board?
Move the approval?
Okay, and you're approving all the dates?
All the dates.
Second.
Now, we're into the future.
Yes, now we have a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the Wim Series is good. Okay, now we have five one-day license, all liquor license, I do, they're all, oh, no.
It's Tuberin malt.
Tuberin malt, okay, for various events happening, do we want to take each one of these individually, let's just--
And Mr. Chair, just for clarification purposes, these are, this is the same tent and same area.
Exactly, exactly.
Deb, you're doing every one of those events as well?
I do, I'm also doing the Wim Dinner Series this year, too.
The only one that I see is July 30th, but I believe we approved the extended hours on July 30th.
Yes, we did, yes.
So all the others are within the timeframe of the license, the only one that's outside of that is, is on July 30th, but we've already approved that, that extension. So we're looking at a malt and wine license on June 24th from 4:30 to 10:00, an all liquor license on July 9th from 4:00 to 10:00, and a one-day all liquor license on July 16th from 4:00 to 10:00, a one-day malt and wine license for a 20th anniversary party on July 24th from 12:00 to 5:00, and then finally, a one-day all liquor license for a wedding on Saturday, July 30th from 5:30 to 11:00.
Move that the board of selectmen acting as Licensing Commissioners approve the five one-day license requests for the events at Smolak Farms on June 24th, July 2nd, July 16th, July 24th, and July 30th as presented.
Second. Okay, any further discussion, any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
See you out the front. Good, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Celebrate season. Don't forget to get your tickets for the Wim Series. Have a good year.
I know. We've got beautiful strawberries.
What do you have these years? Strawberries are good, peaches not too sweet.
No peaches this year. Nothing, most of our bound.
I know, they got frozen.
We've got lots of blueberries and raspberries, so--
Oh, you do?
Oh, yeah. Loaded with blueberries this year.
And there's always apples.
And there's always apples.
And they taste great and sangria.
We'll load up on them.
We'll come back from that.
One time you open it, tell.
Thanks.
Okay, next we have a request from Merrimack College for two one-day wine and malt licenses for orientation parent receptions at the Derochi Lobby from 3:30 to 8:00 on Monday, June 27th, 2016, and Wednesday, June 29th, 2016.
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to move out of licensing?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Oh, business, the Department of Public Works, Works Building Discussion.
There was some question, there was some question regarding the exterior look and the color of the building, so we want, well, again, this is simply a rendering, this is not one of the actual colors that we can choose from, the architect, when he did this rendering, was just trying to match the existing structure that's there, and what he believed the original color was, since it got faded. If you flip to page two, this is the material that will be going on the building, as well as the facade of the old building, and basically, it's an aluminum-faced composite panel screen system, so it's sort of a, well--
Could you hook up which page?
The second page.
Oh, it is now.
The second page. The third page is what it looks like on the Natick Public Works building. That is on the Natick Public Works building. Now, for this particular system, the next three pages are the color schemes that are available, but right now, not knowing, when we put this out as in a construction document, we have to put either three equivalent systems, or the primary, where somebody can bid the equivalent. So until a final selection is made, we won't know exactly the manufacturer of the system that we're going to obtain for the building, as well as the colors that come under the system. But for the recommended system, you have three pages of coloring, and I did ask, the Natick Public Works that you see is champagne metallic, which is on the first page of the color chart, the second one in on the second row. But for this particular system, there's a potpourri of colors to pick.
Great.
But until there's a formal construction document issued, and a contractor selected who bids a particular system, we won't know what color schemes will be available to us. But this is to give you a sense of what might be available.
So when you look at all of these colors, you can pick any of these in a combination, like you could do something for the body of the building, the trim, or one--
I'm not sure that it's that, you can do some of it, that's correct, because in the rendering, you see, you see a little bit of the, well, the fire station was a different, it was a different, it was hardy plank, was brick to a certain extent, and then hardy plank, but if you look at the rendering, you can see that some of the trim is a little different.
Yeah, and if you just look at the Natick building--
Right.
That's what I mean.
Correct. The trim itself is different.
And even the trim around the windows is different.
But this is the picture of the, of the building itself, as opposed to, these are the colors of the building itself, and then you can match trim to whatever color you select.
Well, the reason that, that I asked about it, and sort of Tracy, the both of us were a little bit taken back by that, that color, is that all of our buildings in our town are either brick or brick and tone, and this is a few doors down from the Postmaster General House, to tell you the truth, it's an antiques in town, so it just seems to me we should have something of a, a theme, I mean, it's next to our Brick High School, and--
Well, with all due respect, you can't see the Brick High School from Osgood Street.
I know, but I think that there's a general theme of buildings and colors--
But keep in mind, we're doing an addition to an existing structure, so you kind of have to match the existing structure--
You're not going to repaint that?
We don't have the funds to redo the entire existing building. What we're going to do is, one option is the facade facing, well, the garage is 40,000 square feet, that's a pretty big structure.
You can't spray paint it?
Well, we're going to do as one add-on, the facade facing Osgood Street, and then as a second add-alternate, the facade where the garage doors are, but we can't afford to even replace the garage door, so we're going to try to do the facades that are most visible from the public ways. So we're gonna try to do the facades that are most visible from the public ways. But to do the entire building, I can assure you, we don't have the funds.
So what are we talking, I'm sorry, I thought you said that part of the existing building was gonna be using the same system.
Right, the facade facing Osgood Street. So what you see now is the front of Osgood Street.
Okay.
We're going to redo it, we're going to redo it in the same thing, because you can see that behind the new building. You can see it as part of the new building. And then as an add-alternate, we will try to do similar on what is facing Wayne Street, where all the garage doors are. But we can't replace the garage doors, because there are thirteen garage doors or twelve garage doors.
But that's in the back anyway.
No, that's on the side, on Wayne Street.
Well, what I'm saying is you don't really see it from...
Right, what we were planning on doing is the backside, which faces the wetlands, or the, as you're facing Public Works, the right side, which faces the wetlands that you really can't see from the street.
So when are we gonna get around to fixing that? I mean, it's...
Don't know, it could be part of Facilities Master Plan Two.
It feels half-done.
Yeah.
Well, that's, again, you, you look at Lexington built a Public Works facility for thirty million dollars. Typical Public Works facilities are anywhere between twelve and eighteen million dollars. We have four point four million dollars to work with. We're quite limited.
Ray, what do you envision this project heading off? Because it's such a small project compared to other, other larger ones, what are the problems then that you're looking to head off right now?
Well, again, we don't know what the cost, we don't know, the cost estimates that we received are right on target, which means that we have no flexibility for contingency or change orders.
Okay, what's going in here, then?
That's gonna be all administrative offices.
All administrative offices?
Well, it makes sense because...
Well, yeah, because right now, the administrative offices are cramped.
Yeah, I agree, I agree.
Some of the administrative offices are in makeshift space over the garage.
Yes, yeah.
So we have to create, and we also moved Facilities Management into here, and we're also creating the ability, in the event, you know, we're not doing it just for today, we're doing it for what might happen five, ten, fifteen years from now.
That makes no sense, if we're not gonna finish the job and we're only half-painting the building.
But we never intended to redo the current structure.
But this is the thing, you know, Ray, with all due respect, this is why the Board of Selectmen should have been more actively involved in this, because hand, this is it, and we're like, wait a minute, we never even talked about it at any great length. It just seems to me that maybe we would have decided to take it to a different direction, wait a little, it's sort of, and now, you've told me that it's already gone before the Planning Board, and I'm not criticizing you, I'm just saying that...
No, I'm just explaining the process.
And that...
So licensing is over? We've already discussed licensing?
They withdrew, they withdrew their three, they withdrew their three licenses this evening. You're welcome.
So it's just...
But again, it's the way we've handled every, this is now a project...
But that's not really true, because in the past, we did have a police building committee, we had a town hall building committee, we spoke pretty strongly that we were disappointed that we didn't have a town hall building committee on this renovation project. We've had it for schools...
No, well, I...
Yes, they did, they did have.
But you're talking ten, fifteen years ago, you're not talking the projects that are part of the Facilities Master Plan.
What I'm trying to say is, I think the Board of Selectmen and the public should have had at least a right to weigh in a little bit before we came this far.
Well...
And now you've said, now you've said it's off to the Planning Board, and we're under the gun for time.
We have been, no, we have been working on this project for the last eight months.
Has this ever come before our board?
Not in detail, no.
That's my point, okay, I know, again, you're the messenger...
But none of the other projects that we've done in the Facilities Master Plan came to the board either in detail.
But that's, that's what I'm saying, other than when we said, hey, wait a minute, town hall, can we at least talk about this a little bit? It's the people's building.
I understand that, but I'm not sure you can get consensus from a town of thirty thousand population on how to build a building.
No, but, no, Ray, you're not listening.
I need you to respond.
We'd have a, we'd have a building committee.
Which means the board.
And the board should have an opportunity to weigh in at a public meeting, so...
Every, I can tell you that every project we've done in the Facilities Master Plan, we have had what we call a working group. We've had people who are vested in what's gonna be in that building, from the school, from this building that we're in tonight, to the fire station, to town hall, into Public Works. The working group is what determines the space allocation, the flow, how they want to set up, etc.
The one thing I can say in regards to space, I'd shrink it to paint the whole building.
You wouldn't be able to do that, again.
Well, my, but my point is, it's half, to me, that's a half job. It's a half job.
So can I, can I say that?
Can we address that at a later point?
Yeah, well, we plan to as part of Facilities National Plan Two.
No, but, Phil, to him, yeah, I mean, short-term would be reduce the size of the building, so we can paint the whole.
I'm not really saying anything.
Long-term is you make the size of the building that we need, and then we deal with the painting later.
Yeah, that's...
I mean, we're painting, we're painting the highly visible sections of the building in a color...
But doesn't it seem a little odd that the whole thing, I mean, it just feels half-done?
But again, it's not painting, it's this material, it's not painting. So it's not a matter of buying a couple of gallons at the local hardware store and splashing it on.
But you can't spray paint this material, come on.
What is there now?
Of course we can.
I'm not sure what it would look like.
It's a buffalo building, isn't it metal?
It is.
They can spray paint it.
You can, you can, there's, there's...
Well, we have a painter in the house.
I think ultimately, though, and I want, I, stop me, I think that's the first point, too, is just that it's too bad that we got this far along in the process, and all of a sudden, we're being told, okay, this is definitely the design.
And it came up for town hall?
Without just an actual working, well, only at least some of us, maybe we have this opportunity to have somebody be on there, but...
I was gonna say, maybe you should have somebody from this board on that, that working committee?
But I also think, I also think, and I made a very strong point about it when we did town, there still should be a process where the public gets to at least see where their taxpayer dollars are going. We usually have some kind of discussion, and it gets discussed at a, and you keep saying, well, we don't do that anymore. That's my, that's what I'm saying, we used to do it, we should be doing it. The people have a right to know and to see where their money's going.
But it's also not a process that just started, it's a process that's been going on for the last four years.
And we spoke against it, at least I know I did, and other people were disappointed that we had to pull back to say, well, what are you doing with our town hall? We kind of have a look at, like, to have a look at it. And the architects came in?
For the facade, that's correct.
And well, we must have also met for some of the interior work.
Well, that's a different...
But Ray, but I think you're missing the point, you're arguing with, when we're saying to you, we'd like to weigh in, we'd like the people to weigh in. Yet, maybe it's been done like that recently, but it was never done like that before, and we expressed an interest in it.
Well, again, I can tell you that this project has now been going on for eight months, and to start from scratch is also cost prohibitive, because we are past the schematic design phase.
Well, I don't think, I think the point, I don't think that anybody's looking to go backwards, I think it's going forward, you can't...
Going forward to have one selection, that is, each project, that's all.
And I also think, because of this, that we...
I think if it's come with us and it was red, we may not have even noticed the list.
Oh, trust me, you would have noticed it if it was red.
Or maybe, I mean, let's face it, some of these meetings go pretty quick, maybe we have time on some of these agendas to review, a quick review, but, you know, in, at certain points during the project, before it gets to the point where, you know, it becomes cost prohibitive to change it, we say, okay, this is what, these are some of the renderings that we have, this is the direction we're going on, you know, let's put things on the agenda, especially for meetings.
Well, as you know, the next project, the next project's a school project, and the following one will be the senior center.
Okay, so let's...
And I think the senior center should be very, well, you know, I mean, I hope the old folks get a little bit...
Seniors.
Did I say, oh, yeah, I didn't mean any disrespect by that, I really didn't mean disrespect.
Careful with that word, old folks.
I know, I didn't mean it disrespectfully, but I'd like them to have a voice.
Was it last meeting or was it two meetings ago?
Maybe you'll even just go to the senior center or something.
It was only two meetings ago that I got this.
Have a presentation.
If you've been doing this for eight months, you were, you were still, you were pretty, pretty fine to this process before we had the chance to even look at it, so...
Correct.
I think you'd agree, I mean, it's the whole purpose right now, not the whole, but it's not a, it's not a pretty building right now, wouldn't it be great if, given that neighborhood, we could make it more visually appealing?
I understand.
And a color that won't show dirt, that's one thing, I mean, this, you know, talking to some experts in the field of this, they're saying that this is a color that will show dirt.
Again, he, he...
And it's a dirty site, I mean, it's dirty business.
This is not even a color that, that can be selected, it's just, was his rendering of what he thought the original color was on the Public Works building.
I mean, there's a whole palette of colors here, I mean, if we look at the third, second page of the college...
I'm not so worried about the color.
Yeah, there's like a brick red, the very first one is like a brick red.
Exactly, so something...
Yeah, now that I've seen the colors, I'm not so, I'm just, I don't know, the half-painting and no, just...
So maybe we need to address that and see if there's something that we can do to...
Yeah, I think we really do need to address it.
Aesthetically, though, it's a very attractive building.
A little modern for me, but I'm not...
Yeah, I'm not super with the modern, but, but it's a DPW, and I think it, I think it, you know, it, the modern look, it needs to be functional.
But it does, it's a DPW, it's like a utility building, but even with the modern look, though, honestly, if the, you could actually maybe paint the windows a color with the brick, so it will sort of...
The trim.
Town hall it a little bit. And I think that's, honestly, I, it's a building for trucks, and it's a building where a lot of dirty things happen, and the floors need to be made out of a material where they can hose them down or whatever.
Well, not in the offices, I don't think.
No, not in the offices.
Not in the offices.
No, we don't want them, but, we all get that, but it's still, it's still the taxpayers' money, and we want it to be somewhat attractive, not only for the town, but for the people who live near it.
Absolutely, it needs to be aesthetically...
Now, how far up, this is going to move closer to the street?
Correct, that is in front of the existing building.
Exactly, so how many feet from the street will this be?
I don't know how many feet, but that, the, the front, because we also have to take into consideration that on both right and left, there are wetlands.
Yeah, I know, it's a tough site.
Right, so we're...
How could I be able to see the back?
I'm sorry?
How could I be able to see the back of the building?
Well, not the way this is going to be, because we have to, we, this building is going to be situated just within, on each side of the fifty-foot no-build zone.
I understand.
So we also will be moving the parking spaces, and so there will be, I believe, a total of nine or ten visitor parking spaces only in front, that's all.
So...
They will only be along what you see as Wayne Street, on that side of the parking lot. We are actually reducing the parking lot because of the wetlands requirements.
So I think it would be helpful if we saw a two-b plot plan, too, that was in this package, you know, if we could look at that, just to see the layout, where it's gonna stand.
And actually, I'm going...
That's great, because I'm having a hard time visualizing.
And actually, I'm going before the ZBA next Tuesday night for a variance on the left side, because this is a corner lot, the side setback is twenty feet rather than ten feet, so the, this will be sixteen feet off of the side setback, so we're going for a variance for this, as well as for the salt shed in the back.
Okay.
It's funny, you say it's a corner lot, but it almost looks like it's a sheer drag by the way it is.
Well, again, but legally, that's a street.
No, I understand.
And we're in discussions, you know, the Planning Board will have some questions, I believe, tomorrow night about what the parking requirements are, but we can't fulfill the parking requirements.
Is it tomorrow night or next week?
Tomorrow night is the second day night of the hearing of the Public Planning Board, and Wednesday is the second night of the hearing for the conservation. Next Tuesday is ZBA.
What's the cost of the salt shed in the back, is that gonna be bigger or no?
The salt shed in the back, if I remember correctly, with the demolition and the removal of the existing, doing the work that's necessary in the area, and the new, it's a prefab building, I want to say somewhere around three, four hundred thousand dollars.
That's, that's, so who cares what color it is, Ray?
Well, it'll all be the same color.
And Ray, this, this is a lot of work to still get done, and I appreciate you hearing our feedback, and hopefully there's some...
No problem.
Some change, because I can only imagine after...
I'll come to the territory.
Well, I appreciate your patience.
I'm still waiting, I'm still waiting for the construction.
Because you said that there was a group of people just like that went into town hall, that's that...
Yep, we, the working group, I can tell you that the working group for this project was Bruce Thibodeau, Tim Mallett, and Steve Foster.
Well, we hope that our, our concerns are brought back to them.
Sure.
And if there's, for whatever reason, I think we said tonight, doesn't make sense, we'd love to hear back. Why?
Well, I'd actually like to be a little stronger than that, I'd, I want to hear back, and I'd like us to take a vote on it.
Okay. When the time comes for the color slot, again, we won't know until this is, this project is bid out and the system that's going to be installed, because there are various systems that will fulfill the requirements, then we'll know the color, the colors available for that particular system. So we're talking probably September, October.
So are we re-siding the old building with this new system?
Yes, in order to match the, the front part of the building.
The front, not the side.
The what faces Osgood Street, and then as an add-alternate, we're going to see if we can afford to do what faces Wayne Street, which is visible from houses, too.
Okay.
So what wouldn't be done is what are the faces of the wetlands behind?
Into the right side, correct.
Okay. Are we clear in direction?
Yes, ma'am.
All righty.
Maybe you could send us the ZBA package or the Planning Board package, just so we can see the way.
Sure.
Yeah, I'd like to see that, because I can't, like I said, I'm having a difficult time.
Yep, I can do that.
Yeah, this, yeah, this drawing, to give you a perspective of how...
Sure.
Well, I can drive down, annoy Bruce or something, too.
The stuff's all in my office, actually.
Yeah, and, because I'm assuming this is not gonna be all green, I'm assuming this is going to be parking space.
No, that's gonna be green. That's going to be green.
See why I need help?
The parking's only going to be, as you're facing the building...
Yeah.
The parking is only going to be on the left side, so there's going to be Wayne Street, a small strip of grass, and then perpendicular spaces.
Okay.
That's all that's going to be, there's no parking on the right side. That is going to be grass and recreation of whatever we need to do for the Conservation Commission.
Okay, all right, thank you. Moving on to our new business, we, we...
We do town managers.
We wanna do it last, we wanna do town managers?
If we could.
Sure, we can go out of order, Ray.
Included in your package, first of all, is a report from the Fire Department for opiate overdoses by month in the last two and a half calendar years. So there's a lot of information that's been provided by the Fire Department. Amazingly, and if we go back to two, two thousand and fourteen, the high was four overdoses in October. If we go to two thousand and fifteen, the high was five overdoses in June, and so far this year, there have been two, six, ten total overdoses, with a high of four in March.
It's tragic.
Still a lot.
Yep.
And number of fatalities with that?
They didn't include that, I don't...
Maybe that's a good thing.
Yeah, I don't...
Maybe they didn't have any.
I don't think we had any.
I think that...
I think we had one.
But it's, sometimes it's how they, where they took their drugs and where they...
Like Jeff had said, he had to go back at one point to re-categorize last year that it's been deemed.
Yeah, I think there was one, I think there was one that was originally thought of, or reclassified, but then it was reclassified.
Again, it's one too many.
It's tragic. Well, what's fascinating is, I mean, I think first Jeff, Jeff Duchesne deserves a lot of, a lot of credit, because this isn't the most positive issue to be dealing with, but just looking at, you know, the, the wild swings over the past three years from the breakdown of residents first, non-residents, and it jumps from almost a fifty-fifty split to two-thirds residents for two thousand and fifteen, to then eighty percent non-residents for two thousand and sixteen. I mean, they're small numbers, relatively, you know, one, one overdose can really skew that, but it's just, it's, it's interesting as we think of how, you know, we as a municipality should be responding, you know, from year to year, so I'm grateful for Jeff for getting this all together, and keeping it all together.
And the other thing that's interesting is, as of May, we're at the exact same number as two thousand and fifteen, overdoses.
Yeah, the months differ, but the total is the same.
Yeah, ten, oh, that's-
Well, maybe that's a good thing? None of it's good, but-
One of it's too many, one is too many.
Not increasing, but yeah.
Yeah.
So there was a letter for an Ask the Manager, that Mr. Mailer was kind enough to leave for me.
Oh, you mean it's a doozy?
So I, yes, I will read it to you. Can you give an update of the town building if it is on schedule for completion? And the answer is yes. We, I meet every week as part of the project meeting, and we are still on schedule to be completed by mid-October, as originally planned. If you go into the backside, into the back parking lot and look up, you can actually see the roof of the new atrium and the, and the, that's been placed, the, the steel is all up, and you can see the actual roof already up too, and it's gonna be quite attractive. The rest of the letter, when everyone moves back to the new town building, where will everyone park? The parking area behind the town building will not be sufficient to handle the cars. The people that go to the senior center need parking spaces, especially on Bingo Day. The parking spaces now are narrow, and many cars straddle the painted lines. One month ago, I parked in a space, and when I went back to my car, I had to go through the passenger-side struggle over the transmission hump to get into the driver's seat, because someone with a giant SUV took up the whole space and more, and it was impossible for me to get into on the driver's side. Will the people that work at the town building park in Messinas and take the close parking spaces next to the street? The Selectmen talk about new businesses for the downtown area, but where will the cars park? Making the parking spaces narrow is not the answer. Too many people have giant SUVs and big trucks, which consume more than a parking space. The answer to this is that, as, as the Board knows, we are undertaking a parking study and trying to redesign, are working on a plan that will redesign the parking lot in the back, which will hopefully create somewhere between twelve and fifteen new spaces, if we can accomplish what we're trying to do. Some of the things that need to be taken into consideration is, when we move or redo the handicap parking spaces that are back there, they now have to be fully code compliant.
Right.
And that includes the van accessible side markings, et cetera. So that will be taken into consideration, but most likely, eight handicap spaces will take the space of ten spaces currently, because they're a much larger size and whatever. And then the parking spaces will need to also be brought into code, but the hope is to accomplish the redesign of the parking lot and come up with twelve to fifteen additional spaces. And the answer that one of the parts is, know that town employees cannot park in Messina parking lot.
It's not Messinas, it's First and Main.
It's First and Main, but that's a private lot, it is not a public parking lot.
But we've added spots on First, Second.
We have added some parking spots on First.
And Second, right in the back, yeah.
Oh, that's right, on one side, so there are some additional parking spots that are street parking, that would be available for people using the businesses. But most people have a tough time, because the post office has limited parking, when it's side to side with Dunkin' Donuts, and, you know, on a busy Saturday or on a busy morning, there's a bunch of people trying to use a very limited number of spaces in, in front of those two particular businesses, when there are spaces available elsewhere on Main Street.
Right.
And on some of the adjacent streets.
Okay.
That was the Ask the Manager.
All right.
Most of the biggest problems there are during Bingo.
Well, there, the study conducted shows that there are several time slots during particular days when the lot is full and overpacked, and that's some specific hours on Tuesday, which is Bingo Day, then I think followed by a couple of hours in the middle of Thursday, followed by a couple of hours in the middle of Monday. But other than that, there are spaces, and the streets on Main Street and the adjacent streets were never saturated to capacity. There's always parking spaces, somehow, whether you need to walk half a block or whatever, but again, when you're going to the post office and/or Dunkin' Donuts, and ten cars wanna use the three or four spaces, that's what becomes difficult.
I very rarely thought of my walking either, but I have nothing to complain about.
And we get told, we basically kind of place to park on the side streets anyways, and that's, that's-
They, they, you know, we, we tried for a while, and Laurie, I think, was one of the people who parked in the, in the bank parking lot, and we had made some arrangements to park in the bank parking lot, but again-
The other bank?
One, the, the bank down the street.
Santander.
Santander Bank.
Yeah, because they have, they have like a half.
And we've encouraged employees to also park in the back part of the parking lot. You know, right now, there's a trailer that has the contractor's equipment in there, we're actually going to be putting two additional trailers right next to it, taking as minimal amount of spaces in that far, far corner of the lot where we have to store all the furniture, while they finish the meeting rooms and the conference rooms where we store the furniture, so there'll be a transition period during the summer, but by October, by the end of October, we will be back in the building, full community development. There will be some growing paints, because there'll be people coming. The other thing we're doing as part of the town hall project is, since there's no more Fire Department ramp, we're creating, I think it's five spaces of short-term parking right in front of what will be community development.
Great, that's great.
Because that's where the visitors will be going. So again, it's, it's going to be a transition period, it's going to be a learning period, there's going to be some bumps in the road, it's not all gonna be hunky-dory in the first week, but hopefully by the time we get through the winter, we'll all have adjusted.